Good evening, this is, today is the 11th?
No, the 10th.
July 10th. Missed a day there. July 10th, this is a meeting of the rules Subcommittee to dis, so Mr. Clerk, could you please call a roll?
Chairman Elliott.
Here.
Counselor Conway.
Here.
Counselor Mercy here.
Here.
Three present.
Okay, so it's not often that this Subcommittee meets, but it has been a standing Subcommittee for as long as I can remember. And the purpose of calling this meeting was items that were forwarded, motions that were forwarded from a regular City Council meeting relative to the protests that took place a number of weeks ago in the City Council chamber where a Subcommittee meeting was essentially canceled as a result of people protesting in the chamber. So, motion was filed, one by myself, and I believe there was another member of the City Council. Who would that be? Were there two motions, Mr. Clerk?
It may have been.
Okay, well, there was at least one. So, again, the purpose of meeting is to look at a rule that would create a space if people wanted, so chose to disagree with the motion or an item or an issue. In the past, most protests were held, as far as I can remember, outside. But the purpose, again, is to discuss, you know, setting up a location, if you will, that will allow the Subcommittee or this governing body, the City Council, or School Committee, or any governing body to be able to proceed and still allow people to exercise their First Amendment rights. So, with that, we have Madam, the City Solicitor with us here today. We did receive a communication from the City Manager as a result of motions requesting information on setting up a zone, if you will, or some criteria for, criteria in the City Council chamber during meetings, during posted meetings. So, of course, all the meetings are open to the public, I want to make that clear. As a result of, we have two rules, Rule 26. But with that, one last stop. One, I go to you, Madam Solicitor, and if you could give us a rundown on how, you know, what options are available to allow Subcommittee's and City Council meetings to proceed without disruption. I guess that's the word I've been looking for, disruption, for people of the public who would like to be able to participate as well.
Sure. The, there are two things that the Rules Subcommittee could take a look at. One would be a set of rules as it applies to conduct within the chamber. And the second would be a set of rules as it applies to a free speech zone located outside of the chamber. And the two really are incompatible, as was evidenced the other evening. So, with respect to rules within the chamber, there should be rules of decorum when we, everyone is afforded the opportunity to speak. I think that one thing that could be looked at is there are some existing rules in terms of residence, and that could be reviewed as well, to see if any changes are needed. But, most importantly, the conduct within the chamber. Now, there are communities, Boston, for example, will prohibit large placards or any sort of protest signs. They oftentimes will block the lines of sight. They're, they can be dangerous in a room that is crowded, as sometimes happens in this chamber as well. There can be rules with respect to turning off your handheld devices, turning them on silent, when you enter the, when you enter the chamber. So, there are those types of updates to our rules that probably would serve the body well. In addition to that, we could, we presented some sample language just some time ago with respect to a potential permanent free speech zone. Historically, I think, that when members of the public wish to protest, there has been an opportunity to do that outside the, outside of City Hall, generally in the front of the building. The police chief had also taken a look at having a free speech zone in the front of City Hall, and it was an agreement that the front grounds, or even the side, would be an appropriate area for a congregation. And it would depend on the size of the group. If it was a large group, it could be accommodated in between, in the plaza area. If it was a smaller group, then it could be in the front of the building. They would be seen by members of the general public, and those are the two issues.
Counselor Mercy.
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. When you says, when you say side, sides, what side are you talking about? The side to the street or the side to the JFK Plaza?
The side of the JFK Plaza provides a large area for protest. But generally speaking, I think the preferable area would be right in the front of City Hall.
Right, but if you're saying if it's even more crowded than pertaining to the side of the JFK Plaza?
Right, we could accommodate a group within that area. And there have been protests that have been held there.
Could I ask you this question? As of right now, there are no rules on the books or ordinances that state that out in front there is a free speech zone, right? Is that true?
Correct.
That's correct?
Yeah.
And we automatically thought that that was a rule because whenever anybody protests or demonstrates or makes us aware of an issue, they tend to go right in that actual spot. So, I say, why not make it the place to be? I think it defines an opportunity that you're welcome to have, but this is where we've designated you to be there. And when I say that, over many years, I found that our teachers would be protesting or demonstrating, they were very, very respectful. I mean, they made their point, they were respectful, they didn't hurt anybody coming in, they didn't jump all over them to attack them in any type of way, they were respectful. Just a few, well, maybe two weeks ago, we had National Grid, the people that work in the gas lines on, from the Rock Street Division, who are locked out of contract, they demonstrated there, very, very respectful. And I say, even once the City Council meeting starts, you have every right to come up here and stand there and come to the podium and explain your case in a dignified way. I have no problem with that. But to barge in here and throw yourself on the floor, that's not right. So, that is outlawed. We have this down in an ordinance farm to guide what the rules are. So, we don't want to have the police come in here and escort people out if there's no rules that say that. So, I think it's only imperative that we set up things like that. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Conway.
Thank you. Just to get back, City Solicitor, back to the fact that there's nothing on the rules, nothing on the books at this particular point that would help guide us in this area? I mean, when you think about it, we're going back, going back to the 60s and all the protests that took place, that there was nothing that was put forward that would, again, help guide us on this?
Right, excuse me, the language that is contained in our rules currently speaks to general decorum, but it would be helpful, I think, to have more specificity as we go along.
So, I think then what really precipitated this motion, and not to speak for the Counselor, but was the fact that these individuals came right here, came through those gate, that gate, and stopped the meeting. That, I would assume that's probably, that's the problem that took place. I think if they were outside, or if they were even lining the hallway, I would assume nothing would have happened. Again, motion like this probably wouldn't even have to be brought forward. Is that a fair assumption?
It's hard to say what, you know, what would have happened. I think what is fair to say, though, is our rules could be improved, and more detail could be given. And so that, for example, what you had just mentioned regarding entering into the sort of inner chamber here, there currently isn't, I don't believe, anything in the rules that prohibits members of the public or non-designated, non-elected officials from entering into this area. There are other communities whose rules now address these types of things. The, along with addressing signage issues, not having signs, we have historically had signs in here. However, there are public safety issues that, every single time that happens, there are public safety issues that are put into play. So, if, for example, up in the balcony, there are sign holders, there's always that possibility, depending on the weight, that the sign might come down, it might injure somebody either here or out in the more public area. There's the issue of signs, again, blocking lines of sight. And so, there are a number of decorum details that could be added to our rules that would help, I think, as Counselor Mercy had indicated, help the presiding chair, or even the body itself, by giving it guidelines to then enforce, which makes for a more orderly meeting.
As Counselor Mercy had mentioned about the teachers, for example, how they would protest, and again, in a very respectful way. For many years, I was in those lines also. But we also, we went around, not just in the front, but we also went over to the other door to make sure that, you know, people coming in would understand what we were talking about. So, you're saying at this point, you're probably limited to one specific area, right?
What we could do is designate an area. Now, even by designating an area, it would not in any way prevent people from going to undesignated areas for protest, such is the right of free speech in public areas. However, if the city has designated an area in front of City Hall as an area of protest, then it is something that can be easily utilized by groups, and also, in terms of the public passing by, if it becomes well-known, they would immediately recognize it as a protest. It might be something that they approached to find out more about it. But it wouldn't, by doing that, wouldn't legally prevent members of the public from protesting elsewhere.
Just as a point of clarification, so if they're out there protesting, and as we well know, they can come in and speak.
Yes.
Now, all of a sudden, you know, needless to say, that protest then comes in into, let's say, the hallway. So, now, does that still, does that go against what we were talking about as a safe spot?
Yes, it would. So, the place of protest would be outside the building.
Right, but how do they?
In terms of reasonable regulations and standards of decorum, whether it's in this immediate chamber, or even in the hallway, and even entering the building, depending on the size of a crowd. The, those are restrictions that could be reasonably made by the Council. So, that people that are coming here to do their business are not impeded, they can come in, they can attend a council meeting, and it is a secure, safe, and orderly environment from the time they come into the building, into getting into this chamber, into leaving again.
One last, one last point. If they're going to speak, you know, they give their name and their address, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, do they have to be a resident of the city of Lowell to speak?
Our rules do speak to that, and that was something that I had mentioned at the outset. I think that it would be my recommendation that we take a look at that. And it was somewhat recently, I believe, that that was added to the rules. And again, as we look at all of these other potential changes, that's one that I think we should take a close look at.
Because I was a little surprised that someone could come in here and not be from Lowell. I know, I certainly couldn't go to one of the towns, a town meeting, and all of a sudden get up and decide I want to speak. Because if I'm not a resident of the town, I can't speak. Simple as that. So, I think that's something we should take a good look at. And I know that in the last, one of the last meetings that we had, and the mayor did ask for the address, and if I recall, I don't think the individual gave or didn't want to give the address, his or her address. So, I think that might be something that we very definitely should take a look at and limit that.
So, it is in our rules right now, and it is fairly limited.
So, it just has to be enforced, then?
Well, I think it is enforced. I will say that I don't recall anyone ever coming before this council and not being allowed to speak. However, even if somebody isn't a resident of Lowell, a counselor can, I think, by motion or by two counselors, allow them to speak. The, there are issues that this council deals with that do go well beyond just the residents of Lowell. And that's why I think that it would be wise to take a look at that issue and perhaps expand it, particularly if there are other rules being enforced to create more order. That's one that could be taken a look at to expand it a bit.
Good point, thank you.
Counselor Mercy.
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. Speaking about rules, is there not a rule on the books, maybe it's Robert's Rule of Parliamentary Procedure, and we somehow overlook it, which I overlook it myself, that each counselor has two shots at speaking on one particular issue? And isn't it true that some of us go on and on, maybe seven times, on a particular issue? Is that a rule, or isn't it?
I would defer to the parliamentarian, City Clerk.
Mr. City Clerk.
On that sensitive, sensitive subject.
I always have the rules in front of the council. There is an indication that, and I might be wrong, but it might be an opportunity, if you're the maker of the motion, to speak three times collectively on it, but it is in our council rules.
But if you're not a maker of that motion, how many times can you speak on it?
I would think maybe two.
Twice.
Okay, twice, two times. I never, I know in the back of my mind, it's there, but I don't say a word about it. I'm kind of diplomatic, and let, but I want you to know that I do know rules as well, but thank you.
The meetings will be cut in half.
That's okay, I'm sorry.
Well, I think that coincides with the purpose of this, of this meeting, is to look at our rules and what is, you know, what is enforced. I hope, and I don't believe that we're going to get bogged down, because, I mean, it's important to have rules, but it's also important sometimes to have a dialogue and to ensure that that dialogue is complete from both sides. And I think that's, you know, that's the essence of this. So, Rule 26, which you provided to us, is very clear. Some, a recommendation or suggestion to modify and perhaps to put more clear guidelines in place is included. And I happen to think that the following language, the first paragraph, that Rule 26 be amended by this first paragraph, I think that clarifies what can and cannot be done in this chamber. And I think at the very least, we should move forward, because it does include language regarding placards. And it seems to be a growing trend, if you will, I, you know, in the last year or two, that people are coming with signs, and I understand that. But it does become a nuisance, as you mentioned, when this place is packed. And we've had this, we've had this chamber crowded to capacity, both in the gallery and down here where the placards become a little bit, and they seem to be growing in size. And, you know, my other concern is, we can't, nor should we, but from the public perspective, control what's on those signs. It could be, sometimes it's a personal point of view, but it could be inappropriate to some degree, and to me or others, and we can't. So, I think at the very least, it's important to put this, to this section in place. As far as the second paragraph on the free speech zone, I mean, I personally feel as long as they're not interrupting or disrupting the business that's taking place here in this chamber, then it's all public property. This is the people's house, as Counselor Mercy mentions often at flag raising, it's the people's house, it's not ours, but we are charged with conducting the people's business. And I think, as far as I'm concerned, as long as it's not in here, as was mentioned, it's outside, it's on public grounds, it's not disrupting public, people passing, public passage, or traffic. And in some cases, as you mentioned, Madam Solicitor, depending upon the size and scope of a protest, you require a permit anyway. So, as far as I'm concerned, I like the rules that are being presented that'll preserve the conduct in this, in this chamber, and protect the ability for us to do our business. Then any other protest, you know, anywhere outside can be considered this zone. So, if, I don't know what the will of the body is, but considering we do have lots more placards, and, you know, this also speaks to booing, and cheering, and banners, and placards, and signs, that just, you know, perhaps they're good outside, but they do interfere with, to some degree, what's going on in this chamber. So, I would, you know, I don't know what the wish of the council, I would make a motion that we had proceed with adopting the language in here.
Second, I.
For this two-track, if you will, as you mentioned, one is the decorum in this chamber, and what is allowed and what is not allowed, and I think you spell it out very well. And secondly, I'm fine with not creating a segregated area, a free speech zone. I think that sends a message that we're limiting, and as far as putting up signage and boundary markers, I personally don't think that's, you know, I don't think we need to put that electronically anywhere. And if people want to protest outside, or even in this hallway, that's fine, maybe with permission from the superintendent, but I'm not sure that sends the greatest message if we're putting boundary and markers and signage outside where you can speak, I don't know. I know it's kind of a slippery slope, but as you mentioned, we've allowed it, and those union workers that, you know, I met them last week, they were in front, and they were walking their picket line, and has been the case. So, I hope as long as people know that they're designated to protest out there, not here, certainly not right in this chamber, then that works. So, I entertain a motion for the first section of this language provided by the manager and the solicitor, to incorporate that as part of our rule. the manager and the solicitor, to incorporate that as part of our rule. So this is an amendment to Rule 26, so we'd have to go through the public process, but I think that makes sense that we should adopt that language.
Sure. Second.
So a motion by Councilor Mercy, second by Councilor Conway, to request that Rule 26 be amended, to include language as provided in the memo from the city solicitor, or from the from the manager dated May 2018, relative to, I'll say, the quorum in the chamber. What's the wish of of the body when it comes to the second item, when the there shall be an established free zone? Is it possible to come up with language that, well, I guess you did further, that there'll there'll be an established free zone, but is there some way that we can say, people can protest anywhere they so would like?
Established area?
As long as it's not in here.
Sure, we could do that. The the established free zone really is just a creating a designated area, so that, again, it becomes more recognizable if people are assembled and are speaking out. The, as I had noted earlier, it it would not at all prohibit somebody from protesting along the sidewalk or other public areas of their of their choosing. But it helps to create some sense of order for the for the city, in terms of being able to, in the event that it was necessary, have a a safe environment for that. But it also is something that gives a benefit, I think, to to those engaged in in protesting, in that the if the area becomes recognized as such, people, again, immediately know what they're doing. With respect to allowing that conduct within within the building, I think generally in other communities, it's it's prohibited, not just in the in the chamber, but again, say, like, in the in the hallway. In any of these cases, it's always going to be dependent on the nature of what it is where we're talking about. So if if somebody wanted to protest quietly and orderly in in some in some fashion in the hallway, that's not to say that that would never be permissible. But but again, the the spirit of the of the rule change would be to create order within here, but also to provide a very visible place where people can be seen and heard who are engaged in the in the in the civil act of protesting.
Okay. Yeah, I I think that makes sense. I do like a free speech area than zone. Zone seems to be very constricting, if you will. So I I'm fine with moving forward. I do think it's important to move, as we move forward, to let folks know where where they can protest. And if
A designated protest area. Designated protest area.
Right, again, they can protest virtually anywhere in the outside, but this is just really providing them with a recognized area, so that when people are assembled, it becomes more easily recognized as well by the by the public as to what they're engaged in.
Okay. Is there a motion that we, I guess we'll still need language, I mean, I think the first the first paragraph is fine, as presented. Second issue of a free speech area to be lo or
We can, we can work some more on that paragraph, and and maybe move forward with the with the initial paragraph, and then spend a bit more time researching and improving on the on the second paragraph.
Okay. Does that make sense to you?
That makes sense. I don't like the word zone. I don't like the speech zone, but I do like a designated protest area. It's an area of the city that we allow people to protest. I know it probably means the same, but words sometimes are harsh. And I just want to make this last statement. I've always been under the belief that your rights stop when they violate mine, or my rights stop when I violate your rights. I always felt like that. People have rights, but if it gets out of hand and you're violating someone's interfering with someone else's rights, then it cancels it out. That's my opinion.
Okay, so we'll take that, we'll request that, the second item, the free speech area, language, and be be researched and research, and we come back with a little bit more definition on exactly how we can approach that particular area. Councilor Leahy has has been here for a while, I'm sorry, I didn't identify him earlier. So with that, Councilor Leahy, thank you for joining us.
Thank you. I'm good, thank you.
Good. I know Mayor Samaras was here earlier. So with that, I I don't, we have motion, and the first motion was, do we vote on that, Mr. Clerk?
Yeah.
Okay. So the first motion by Councilor Mercy, second by Councilor Conway, on recommending the amending Rule 26 per the language for decorum in the chamber. Roll call. Do we need a roll?
Counsel, Counsel Elliot?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Counselor Mercia?
Yes.
Three yeses.
The second item, motion by Councilor Mercy, second by Councilor Conway, to request the city solicitor for the research, the issue of a free speech area slash, what did you have, Councilor Mercy?
Designated protest area. Kind of sounds better than saying it's a zone, like the Twilight Zone, or something like that.
That the solicitor to research a little bit further on exactly how that language should be tailored before it's presented for, before amendment. Roll call, Mr.?
Counsel Elliot?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Three yeses.
So I I think that's good, I think we'll be moving forward, we can at least move forward with the First Amendment, and because I I do know, could you just go through the process again, to to institute a rule change? It has to be advertised twice, or heard twice and then voted on? It's it's different from a regular ordinance.
I believe it has to be in, it has to be presented in writing to the council initially, and then it's taken up once the council, I believe, has it had, has had it previously.
Yeah. Counselor
The clerk wants to
It's got to be before the the rule Subcommittee, and in any language, got to be put on. I don't think it's an ordinance, so I think it's just a vote.
No, it's just the rules.
Just a vote to the amend to the amend our rules, and
Yeah.
Before the body requires six votes, but it just has to get to the council a week before.
Right.
Oh, okay.
In writing, a week before, yeah.
So we're going to recommend, we made these recommendations to you, you'll bring it back. It's not coming back to this coun, rule Subcommittee, again?
No, it'll come back
I mean, the second issue, yes?
Right.
Okay.
Second issue, yes.
Second issue, she's gonna, the solicitor's gonna work on that language a little bit more, but the first, the first amended amendment will be will be taken up at sometime in the future. Okay. And there's nothing else before this Subcommittee? Any other questions, any other comments, Mr. Move to adjourned by Counsel Conway, second by Counsel Mercia? All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Madam Solicitor, for your assistance on this and direction. And we know that we know that this will strengthen our rules and, you know, put guidelines in place for the benefit of of this body and the city. Thank you.